Okay, for disclosure, I have hit the record button. Record button. So that's what you say.
Don't say anything you don't want to be written down, right?
That's right, on the front page of the New York Times, that's your test.
Well, first of all, thanks to everybody for joining. I hope you're not running out to get the milk. Thank you.
I hope you don't have to run out to get the milk and the toilet paper and what else is it that everybody buys in Baltimore?
Oh my gosh. Anyhow, it's been an interesting last hour. Last minute changes, Jay, thank you for letting me call you for that. And at the last minute, a couple people, like Mary Scott is babysitting someone that actually got a call about a shot. Mike Bullis is on his way to get his shot. And Doug, are you here? You said you might be getting yours. And I think that's a great intro to Terry again today because we really appreciate Terry coming and letting us know what's going on in the county with the shots. But it also shows that people with disabilities can't get a last minute call and get there because the transportation is sometimes a problem. And that's not for you to certainly address, but just to be made aware of. So turn it over to Terry, thank you. You want to introduce yourself again, Terry?
Sure, good morning, everybody. My name is Terry Sap. I'm the Public Health Emergency Coordinator for Baltimore County. And I'm the Lead Planner for the Mass Vaccination Sites in Baltimore County. We currently have two in operation. One, as you know, at the Cow Palace in Timonium. The second site is a smaller site, which is at the Randalls Town Community Center. And there will be a third one soon. The lawyers are working on the MOU and that will be at CCBC Community College of Baltimore County in Essex. So we will have a central location, an east location, and a west location. Respectively, there are small, medium, and large in size. So we're doing our best to get as many folks as we can through. Updates, I will tell you is that due to the weather that we are expecting, we will not be doing any vaccinations on tomorrow, which is Thursday, I believe, or Friday. That is for the safety of our staff and for our county residents. I don't think that's going to be a surprise to anybody. There's a lot of weather coming in. We are hoping that if weather cooperates and our vaccine supply cooperates, we'll be having a rather massive site up on Sunday, which is unusual. We normally don't do vaccinations on the weekends, particularly Sundays. But again, we're trying to get caught up. We want to have as many doses out there as possible. Again, this is all by appointment only. So that kind of leads into the next piece of some of the changes and additions since my last update to you. And I'm just going to kind of run down the laundry list here if you'll indulge me. And then, of course, we can, you know, take any questions or have dialogue. So I wanted to kind of follow up on a lot of things. And Jay, I can kind of send you this list for the minutes or for folks who couldn't make the meeting so they can kind of keep up to date. Because it's got a lot of information here. First is that we have purchased those clear masks that were recommended to us. And we will be getting those distributed to our sites as needed. And we've also purchased two small portable dry erase boards for communication. So for folks who maybe can't read lips, or if they have aphasia, or if there's some other issues that they may have, we're going to have those as well. We have added many more golf carts to the Cow Palace. And we are arranging for golf carts and drivers at the Essex site. And I believe we may be getting one or two at the Randalls Town site, although we haven't really needed them there. The golf carts have been very popular. They are basically transporting folks from their cars to the front doors of the vaccination site and then back to their cars. The feedback we did get is that we need some signage out at the Cow Palace in particular because there are no marked rows for the parking there. And if you are like me and you forget where you parked, it could be a little challenging to find your way back to your car. So we're working on the, with the county sign shop, getting us some signage for that. We have also added additional wheelchairs at all locations. So I think we're now up to 20 wheelchairs at the Cow Palace. And we'll have 15 to 20 on site at Randalls Town and at CCBC Essex. And we also have staff available to help folks push those wheelchairs if they come with someone who is not able to push the person through the site. We also changed the layout slightly at the Cow Palace to modify it based on some feedback we were given. So we actually kind of have a wheelchair express lane, if you will. What we found was that the wheelchairs in our ADA areas just physically took up a lot of the space, the bigger footprint. And because of that, the ADA area was backing up a little bit. So I've modified it so first of all, all of the lanes are wide enough to accommodate both motorized and manual wheelchairs. So there's really two ways to navigate through them. They can either go through the general lanes, we call them the express lanes because it kind of, it sounds better. But you can go through the regular lanes. Or we do have one lane in particular that we designated as an express lane just because it's a much easier way for folks to just go right through. So we have those wheelchair express lanes at the Cow Palace and that prevented some congestion in the ADA area. All of our sites, we've expanded the size of the ADA area just to accommodate more folks. And something new that we added, we added one at Randalls Town. And we are in the process of setting one up at the Cow Palace, which is a low stimuli area. Because we know that it's very overwhelming, the sights, the sounds, there's a lot of colors. The cones are very bright and fluorescent, there's lots of vests and lots of activity. And we did see at Randalls Town, we had some group homes that were bringing their clientele through. You know, our preference might actually be that we can work on getting some folks go to those facilities. But well, someone shared the link and they signed all these folks up and they came. And we felt it was just much better to take care of them rather than turn them away, obviously. So we are working with a low stimuli area. It's not the greatest, I will tell you that, but it is definitely quieter. It's a lot less visually stimulating and it's just a lot easier, I think, for the clients to navigate through. We have added more signage, one sign that is about accommodations. That if anyone requires any accommodations, please let us know and we'll do everything we can to make all reasonable accommodations. We also added some signage about service animals. The questions we have right now are really about the emotional support animals, whether or not we're able to accommodate that. We did have one person come through with an emotional support animal and not a service dog. And I made the judgment call on that day, it was just easier to get that person through with their emotional support animal, which was a dog. Even though that was not, it was clearly not a service dog. But we're kind of weighing in on that one. Again, it's going to depend on the behavior of the animal, actually, to make sure that it doesn't cause a problem for other clients as well. Fortunately, in that case, the dog was well-trained and very well behaved. We have Language Link instructions now at all of our sites. So that if someone comes who speaks a language that we're unfamiliar with, that we can connect with Language Link, that provides many languages to aid them. 211, look at my notes here. 211 and Department of Aging continue to assist any of our residents who have difficulty making appointments due to a lack of technology. And you don't have to be a senior citizen to get that assistance. They can call 211, who will connect them up with the Department of Aging. So if they need help booking those appointments, we have that service available. We've added even more staff on site to help all of our clients, all of our patients, make their second appointment when they come. So after you get vaccinated, you sit in the observation areas. And staff will come to you with a tablet to help you make that second appointment if you do not have a smartphone or if you just have trouble with your smartphone making that second appointment. We are working really closely now with Department of Aging, the Health Department, and some other agencies to address homebound individuals. So this is a work in progress. It's challenging, especially with vaccine, especially Pfizer vaccine, that has a lot of storage requirements and requires very gentle handling. But again, that's something that, you know, is definitely on our radar and we are working with those agencies for those individuals. Department of Aging also working with the other, there's a lot of agency partnerships out there to address senior housing. So, you know, again, it's a work in progress. There are many, many, many of these facilities in Baltimore County. So, you know, with limited vaccine, there's a lot of patience that we all have to exercise at this time. And the last piece is I am working with Baltimore County on a short six-minute tutorial video. That will be both subtitled and I hope we can get a Spanish version done as well. That will basically give you a sneak peek of this is what to expect when you come to a mass vaccination clinic. So that seniors and people who have anxiety disorders will maybe have a little more understanding of what to expect and to help them prepare. So let me think here, I think I got everything. I think that's everything. I think I got it all. There's a long list, I know.
Terry, I've got, I've got two questions. One, your sites in Baltimore County, can anybody in the state access your sites for vaccination? And two, in the past, we've known that the fairgrounds does not have accessible bathrooms. Does the Cow Palace have one?
So let me get the easy question, the bathroom question first. And that is, I know that they have one, at least one ADA stall that's there at the Cow Palace. When you come inside, and I don't know about the ladies room, I'm assuming there is one, but I can check on that. I know there is one in the men's room that is an ADA stall that can accommodate a wheelchair or people with physical disabilities. Regarding the other question, which is can anyone access the site? So Maryland has been, the state of Maryland has been pretty clear about we cannot discriminate against someone coming from another state or another county if they have an appointment. So for example, if you are a snowbird and you live in Florida for half the year and half the year you're in Maryland and you have a Florida driver's license, for example, and you make your appointment in Maryland because you're up here visiting, we will absolutely not turn anyone away that has an out-of-state license. What I can tell you is when you do register, when we do those queries to pull folks out of the registry, I believe we are giving the priority to folks in the appropriate age brackets, but who are also Baltimore County residents. Obviously, we're going to try to get to everyone that we can. But we do encourage folks to get vaccinated in the county where they reside. As opposed to coming from every county in Maryland to Baltimore County. Now, the state has said that they do have mass vaccination sites in three locations, the Convention Center, M&amp;T Bank Stadium, and Six Flags, which I believe is still a drive-through. And that anyone, anywhere in the state can register for those. I have no involvement with those, so I'm, I'll, I believe there is a website or a phone number that can be called. I'll get that information for you on how to get an appointment there. For the Baltimore County sites, it is all through our registry. And it's the same process of you register and then you'll be sent a registration link, an appointment link. You'll answer the questions on that link and make your appointment. And then you'll be registered to come to that site for that appointment time slot. And once again, we ask that people not share their links with anyone as that has caused significant problems at the sites.
Any woman that says, "Men don't listen," Terry Sap, you really listened. And I think you took all of our concerns to heart and have addressed them. Can anyone think of any other concern, oh my gracious, thank you so much for all of that.
I see Larry has his hand up.
Hey Larry, unmute yourself. Larry, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Ben, to answer your question. And Terry, the only other bathrooms out there that are totally accessible is at the OTD. I got those totally accessible, that's the All-Track bedding. That's about a quarter of a mile up from the Cow Palace. I'm working my way down there because that part of that facility is 503. The other part is not a 501C3, that's cash. So I'm trying to get them to come totally up to par down in those facilities. Because they always got things going on at the fairgrounds. That's the biggest facility with more activities than anybody. But because they sit as profit and nonprofit, they slip through the cracks. So it's all about trying to educate to bring in accessibility.
So Larry, if I can ask, I have no control over that, obviously, as you said, we're guests in that facility. I know that they have the large stall with the wide door and the handles, rails. Is there something about the Cow Palace that makes it accessible?
They do have the low end, so it's ramp-like, but isn't. Now you got to think about it, they're still back in the days before 504, okay? So it's trying to move that whole thing along. Because people at that time handled disabilities differently than the demand of ADA does. So as a whole, about education. And the only way that I've seen to work with those type things is by MBO, that's marketing by objectives. To put it out there and to let common sense bring it in. Because I'm tired of fighting. It took 55 years to get you to this point, to get people with mixed cultures to understand what ADA is all about, you know? So as you're out there doing what you're doing, people are seeing the needs and they'll come along. But unfortunately, it's not as quickly as we want them to be. And I'm seeing that right out there in the biggest shooting place in the state, and that's American Gun Club. And you can't imagine all the people out there with disabilities and there's no access, it's there now.
But you actually just reminded me of one more thing I forgot. I'll add it to my list, which is we had a restroom trailer placed outside the Cow Palace. Okay. Days when, I hate to tell you, some days we do have a line, but Sunday is going to be very, 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 very busy. So as fast as we go and vaccinate there, just an FYI, between 500 and 600 shots an hour. Some days, we do have lines. We have a trailer placed outside the front doors of the Cow Palace so that if folks are standing in line and need to use the restroom.
Do they have ramps?
Yes, we have.
Okay, great.
We have an ADA stall in that trailer and an approved ramp outside.
You only got one, right?
Unfortunately, one.
Can I ask you to make a suggestion? Could you possibly get a volunteer, somebody, to intermittently clean it? Because you got all those people out there, so it keeps it up to ADA standards of cleanliness, knowing that the pandemic is out there and everything else. So as long as you're making an effort to consider all the things, no one can ever come back to hold you responsible for anything.
Well, it's not because I am psychic. I will tell you, we actually, and this was Dr. Branch's request. We sent one of the county property management staff from their cleaning services actually out to the Cow Palace. Typically, to keep all of the trailers' restrooms well cleaned. Since, you know, that's kind of our trailer, our area, so.
I guess you're the right man for the job, huh, Terry?
I can't take any credit for that. That was actually, that was your health officer, Dr. Branch, your health officer and mine. So that was, that was his idea. So if you're, if you are, it's your turn, Larry, and you're out there getting vaccinated and if you do find that it is.
I'm done, I'm done. I had all of mine. Thanks.
If we hear that it is not clean to folk satisfaction, we will, we'll take care of that.
Okay, great.
Great, great job, Terry.
So just a quick, quick comment for Terry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So I have a 91-year-old mother-in-law who tried to sign up for a vaccination. On day two of when the registration process was open, because she is, she can't do the computer herself, right? I have yet to get a email saying that she would get a, you know, to sign up. I think I just figured out why, though, based on what you were saying. Because my daughter signed her up and there was no definition of homebound. So my daughter's interpretation was, well, she can't drive herself, she can't really go out without somebody else's assistance, so she's homebound. However, she can move around, she can, you know. But maybe if, if homebound really means can't leave your house at all, there should just be a little down explanation or something about that. Ironically, she ended up getting shots already. But it was because the teachers got the link and the, her next-door neighbor offered to bring her with her. Further, the irony, when they got to the Cow Palace, the teacher got denied that day, but my mother-in-law got it. So it worked out for her, but not for the teacher. But now I think we understand why. Because every, I know a few people who are in that boat where they, they checked off homebound thinking, oh, I'm frail, I'm elderly, I really need it. And maybe that's why they're not getting any emails from Health Department.
Yeah, and I think we do have folks that are going to be probably following up with the folks that checked homebound. A little side note about the teachers, because you know, there's like 17,000 personnel with Baltimore County Public Schools. And all of the issues with teachers, what we have basically done is given them a day at the Cow Palace, Fridays is their day. And we have their staff basically running that pod with our oversight. We have our health nurses there making sure the vaccine is done properly and managed. And one of my staff are usually in command to make sure everything runs smoothly with them. But it's kind of a school-run, school-delivered pod for school staff. So I want at least to reassure you, we're taking care of the teachers too. We're trying to get as many of our folks done as possible. But one of the other reasons why we have that issue with the sharing, we are now required to track first doses separate from second doses when we get them. So the state is really strict with us about not giving a first dose out during a second dose clinic unless we're at the very, very end and somebody makes a boo-boo and we kill too many. And then, you know, then we just get them in the arms as quick as we can, whoever we can. But that's pretty rare now. We're really doing a good job of not having those last-minute dashes. So I'm glad everybody got vaccinated and, you know, we're continuing to learn as we do this.
Wonderful job so far, holy cow. And I, the same thing happened to me, Colleen, my next-door neighbor was 90. And she actually just called the hotline at the Department of Aging because she didn't have access to a computer. I think you've covered all the bases, Terry Sap, good job, congratulations, thank you. Any other questions for him? Wow, I think we're doing, it sounds like, I mean, I know a lot of people are still waiting, but it sounds like Baltimore County is doing a great job and I'm happy to hear that. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you, and would, would you be interested, I can send the script of the video. You know, it's the first draft, so be nice, it's the first draft, there will be changes to it.
Maybe send that, send that to Jay and we'll take a look, thank you.
Right, I'll send that to Jay with kind of my little laundry list here. And that way, everybody who, you know, didn't catch everything on the first round can get caught up.
Good job, you checked off the laundry list, appreciate that.
Right, thank you.
This isn't, this is Brian, this isn't a question, but just so everybody is aware, if you're not already, for the DA agencies, we worked with pharmacies and we were able, it's probably similar for the other agencies on the call. But we worked with, for Gallagher, we worked with CVS. And two Fridays ago, we were able to vaccinate, I think it was 245 of the people that we support. And then actually also some of the, of the parents who live in the community with their, with their adult children. Because they had a very legitimate point, if we're vaccinating my son or daughter, well, I'm the caregiver. So I'm really the one who, you know, we need to be careful about in terms of getting vaccinated. But anyway, for us, we just had a wonderful experience with CVS and they were, they were really great.
Yeah, we did, well, we're having nine clinics at the Arc Baltimore, so we've had three so far and done about 600 or so folks. Now, we had another one scheduled for Friday with another 400 coming that we are having to reschedule till Saturday. But we, and we also did Pfizer and CVS as well, so. And we expanded it to Nacha, because it's originally through Operation Warp Speed, so it was supposed to be for congregate living. But they allowed us to do all the people that we support that wanted it, all our staff. We included some families, not all, but some families. And so, and we're, you know, so we have six more clinics to go, but massive effort, I mean, really massive effort. So and we've had exposures because of it and we've had people have to go into, we had 20 staff go in isolation. And so there's lots of nuances to hosting it in a smaller setting. So we don't have a access to something as large as the Cow Palace. So we had to just kind of work it through our offices, but we were thrilled, like Brian, we were thrilled to be able to do it.
Yeah, I'm really glad to hear that. You know, I know we have, they told me over 1,200 of the smaller group homes throughout Baltimore County. And, you know, some of these might have five or six people in them total that may not be able to tap into the CVS or the, you know, the Rite Aid or the Walgreens partnership. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can get more and more of those done. But I'm glad to hear that they are getting vaccinated at their home facilities. Because really, the mass vaccination pods are just not the best environment for them.
Yeah, we did a mix of in people's, well, sorry, Terry, we, it was too hard to do it in people's homes because we couldn't invite more people. So we wanted to reach more, so we did it in our office, in all of our offices. So, but they, we had several houses go into outbreak, so we couldn't bring them to the office. So we're rescheduling and having CVS go to their home. So it's really just a fluid, very fluid operation to be able to do this. So, but a lot of agencies didn't, you had to sign up in October for Operation Warp Speed and there was a two-week window. And a lot of agencies didn't, and so, and day programs, who only do day programs aren't able to do it. So now I know Secretary Beatty is working with some of them to try to figure out if there's a way to reach those folks.
So is CVS the only one doing this, or you said Rite Aid and Walgreens also?
Yeah, you could, you could. This Walgreen, for Operation Warp Speed, it's just CVS and Walgreens.
Gotcha.
But we are seeing more pharmacies getting on board with federal partnerships. So, you know, my personal wish is that every pharmacy will eventually be able to get vaccine. That's my hope, because, you know, as many vaccinations as we're doing, we certainly can't do it by ourselves.
This is all good news. Hi, Colleen, you had a question?
Yeah, I think that, say, I got my first vaccine from Mid-Star Franklin Square Hospital. Okay, they are doing great job, the first one is done, Friday is the second, the day after tomorrow would be the Friday is the second, this, the after tomorrow will be the second one. So mine in the Mid-Starr Franklin Square Hospital, they're doing lot, good, good job also.
It's really good to hear great news like that. I'm still waiting, but I'm staying home and I'm patient, so. Any other questions for Terry Sap? Again, thank you so much for giving us your time. We really appreciate it. And thank you for taking all of our suggestions. I think you've done a phenomenal job, certainly for citizens and residents in Baltimore County who have disabilities. Thank you again.
Oh, thank all of you and hope to see those of you who haven't been vaccinated soon.
Yeah. All right, our next agenda item is Colleen.
Hi.
About the emergency relief.
Yes. So Jay asked me to talk a little bit about the eviction prevention efforts that the county has underway. And if you read the news, there's a lot of talk about different funding coming in. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what those different funding streams are, how we're taking applications, what partner agencies we have. And then at the end, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to, to ask me. So we are currently in what we are sort of affectionately calling EPP, Eviction Prevention Program, Phase Two. And that is a $2 million effort with federal community development block grant funding. And it is technically called CDBGCV for coronavirus. It is a specific award that we got from the federal government outside of our normal Baltimore County entitlement awards that, for example, the commission is involved with construction and capital projects each year, right? So this is coronavirus specific CDBG funding, so that's $2 million. The state of Maryland also received a CDBGCV award from the federal government. And they received so much funding that they couldn't possibly distribute it to all of the counties without also giving it to counties like ours who got our own as well. So we have $2 million just for being Baltimore County. We then got $3 million from the state of Maryland. And then on top of that, just a couple of weeks ago, the US Treasury also announced that they will have funding for jurisdictions with 200,000 or more individuals for which Baltimore County then qualifies. We received $25 million through the US Treasury. The state of Maryland also received a huge amount of money. And once again, the state of Maryland is expecting that they can't possibly distribute that all, all of their monies without also giving some to local jurisdictions like Baltimore County. So we, and we don't know how much we will get through the state of Maryland, but we're also anticipating that we will get more money through the state of Maryland. Each of those fund sources covers slightly different things. So the first pot, the $2 million, which initially started out as mechanism to give eviction prevention, pay rental arrears for about 545 individuals for three months. The three months was because that was what the federal community development block grant CDBG regulations said at that point in time. Of course, as a sort of typical in scenarios like this, after we put out our RFP, after we wrote our grant agreements with all of the nonprofit organizations, HUD came back and said, oh, you can do six months. So we decided that we would stay with three months initially to see if we could kind of clear out that group, maybe the short term group of, of need and get them out the door. That has not been the case. We are actually going to be moving into allowing that group to use the funds for up to six months of arrears. Shortly, we've already started having conversations with our nonprofits about that. The second pot of money, the DHCD, CDBGCV, that $3 million started out, because they put theirs out later, they started out right from the get go with six months of funding. The, there's the state decided to layer on additional requirements to that funding above and beyond what the federal government allowed for or required. They are now sort of pulling back on some of those requirements in large measure because some of the large counties like Baltimore County sort of said, yeah, we're not quite sure that this works. For example, they were going to hold the counties responsible if you gave money to a, to a client and that landlord. And then the landlord chose to evict the person later down the road. Well, then it was going to be up to Baltimore County to kind of like track down that money from the landlord and get it back. And there were no enforcement mechanisms. It was a good idea, basically like, hey, we don't want to give somebody money and then have them evict, you know, two months later. But practicality wise, it just really wasn't working. So things like that, the counties, the big counties have kind of been working with the state. We still are working with the state. So those monies are actually not out on the street yet for use. They will be hopefully in the next month or so. But even that delay has not really hurt us because we still haven't even moved through the $2 million that's in, in our Baltimore County money. Then the treasury funds, which only just became available to us, we applied in January and the treasury funding is up to 12 months of rental arrears. So a much bigger assistance than the CDBG money plus three months moving forward. So in theory, you could almost give somebody really 15 months of assistance. However, the treasury has not put out any guidance on exactly how we are supposed to be, what it means to give three months forward. It, it puts in some language about case management and that sort of thing, but it has no guidance and it doesn't even really know, people have asked and they said, oh, we'll figure that out later. As a sort of typical in these scenarios, again, people are making their best attempts to kind of cover all bases. But the, the cart is a little bit ahead of the horse here sometimes. And so Baltimore County has decided to be thoughtful about how we do this and stay with the things that we know are already defined, rather than going out and doing things that aren't defined, only to find out later that we interpreted the, the information differently than the US Treasury. So, so we're, these are the various pots of money that are out there for use. We have a partnership with about six or seven different nonprofits. There are different nonprofits involved with each of the different pots of money, depending upon what they wanted to be part of or not part of. But the process is that Baltimore County has a portal to apply for eviction prevention funding on the DSS website. And if you go to Baltimore County Agencies, Social Services, Financial Assistance, Eviction Prevention, or more easily, if you just Google Baltimore County COVID eviction assistance, it'll pop up to the right page. And in that portal, it's a very short, takes you two to three minutes sort of survey of, you know, what's your name? What kind of assistance do you need? Are you a Baltimore County resident? Kind of collecting all of the baseline information of need. And then from there, you are then referred to a partner agency. Why did we do that as opposed to just sending people to the partner agency? We wanted to have a place where we could tell the world, hey, here is this eviction prevention, rather than having people having to call Community Assistance Network and Jewish Community Services and Episcopal Housing, all these different kind of, you know, individual agencies searching for available monies, kind of like what people are doing on the vaccination front, right? Whether they're calling, so we wanted everybody to come in through one portal. Then those are farmed out to these different partner agencies. And those, those partner agencies have the case managers on staff to actually call, accept the, the documentation of eligibility, have you upload all of that personal information? The HIPAA compliant type stuff does not go into our portal. It only goes directly to the individual agency that will be serving you. So you get a call from that person, hold on one second, and then I'll go back. And then they will walk through the information with you, determine if you're eligible or not for the funding. Everybody has to be at 80% or below of area median income for funding. Everyone has to have it, be impacted by COVID, whether that means a loss of a job or needing to stay home to take care of your children. Those are reasons for this type of eviction prevention funding. So then they work with the nonprofit, the nonprofit then would actually issue a check to the landlord and not to the individual client. We have to go to the landlord. And then, and we're hoping to cure the, the eviction fully. We don't want to pay, you know, half of it and still leave a number of months out there hanging. Larry, did you have a question before I move on? I think you might still be on mute, Larry.
Okay, I'm in the house.
There we go.
Okay, while you were talking, you answered some of the questions that I had. I got a two part question. Number one, you mentioned various funding streams that the county was getting. First part of the question is, if an individual meets the requirements to receive funding for that past due account that they have? And you also mentioned up to 15 months, right?
For the one type of, yeah.
So does that person exhaust the funding stream that they currently entered on? Or do they attach to the funds that are coming in, as you mentioned prior, of the other layers funding coming in? That's part one of the question, which means because you talked about the partnerships of the 501(c)(3) memberships that are supporting in this? The jeopardy that they fall into? What restrictions do they have? If a person who's going in to receive the funding for whatever reason, with that individual and the landlord, that person has to leave that residence? Okay, for whatever reason, does that funding stop for the individual's need?
Okay, so first of all, the eviction prevention piece is really only funding money that you already owe. So if you are five months behind in your rent and you also have to pay this current month, that would be the six months that would be allowed under the CDBG funding. The six, the months have to be contiguous, so I can't fund two months, you know,
Oh, okay, got it.
Back in March and then do three months later. They have to, all the months have to be touching one another, right? So it's one payment for a contiguous period of rental arrears that have, that are outstanding and need to be paid.
Okay, you just said a key thing. I'm sorry to interrupt you because you answered everything. Now, because of what you just said and because you put up a requirement of 15 months, because of the interruption of that, not that flowing of one check, can that person come back and get on that same stream?
Okay, so the requirement, so first of all, the, the requirement of 15 months is not a requirement at all. It just means that we are allowed to, to help them for that long. We could help them for a shorter period of time as well. The same with the six months, that's just the maximum, not a minimum, minimum. In terms of whether or not people can come back for a second time, that is obviously a conversation we have been having. Early on, we thought that they could not because there was some language coming out from the federal government saying that if you, you could not have a duplication of benefit with the same funding source. Now they're coming, and so we were taking that to mean duplicating the same type of benefit twice for this COVID experience, right? Now what we're finding though, is that they're, again, trying to offer a little more guidance. And they're saying, well, what we probably really meant was we didn't want to duplicate the benefit for the same month so that you could have had, you know, somebody get payment from March. And then they're going to come back a second time and pretend that they never got March paid, right? So, or the other guidance they've said is, well, if somebody can, gets assistance and then you have fully exhausted all the other requests, then you can assist them again, basically they go to the back of the line. And if there's still money available, again, at the back of the line and they need it again, then yes, you could assist them. Honestly, the written guidance has not been super clear. So these are things that we're all trying to kind of feel our way through. I think the general belief is, obviously, we want to try to help as many people as possible, but in a way that is substantive and takes them out of a hole, rather than kind of just partially helping them and still leaving them in eviction. But you know, now they've just extended the moratorium again until June 30th now. So we're going to have more and more people who potentially have longer and longer and longer periods of time. So one of the questions we've even sort of been playing with internally is, HUD already moved the deadline from three months to six months for their CDBG money. Would they go and extend that to a longer period of time? Because by the time we get to people, they're already six, seven, eight months in arrears now. So what are we doing in those scenarios? You know, we're trying to work with landlords to get them to forgive a couple of months. We are also encouraging our nonprofits, if they have other funding sources that are not federal, private donations, et cetera, to marry those, you know, to cover the, like, let's say if somebody needs eight months of assistance, CDBG pays for six and then they get a private funding source or something to pay for the other two, right? That is all allowed. What we do know though, is even with our $2 million for CDBG was originally supposed to serve 545 households? That was with just three months of assistance. The DHCD, the state CDBG money of $3 million, that was supposed to serve 500 households for six months. As we expand the number of months, we're obviously going to be able to serve fewer households because it takes more money. What we do know is, in our portal, we have had over 6,000 requests for assistance. In the, the $5 million for CDBG that I've just mentioned, we're only talking 1,000 households that we're trying to serve. So the need is great. And we are constantly working with, but some of our other partners that we're working with is the Fair Housing Action Center of Maryland, doing tenant advocacy, legal aid to help them with representation. United Way of Central Maryland, we are working with them to, with some of our larger landlords to bundle patients so that we can kind of almost negotiate discounts for, because of the large volume that the county is helping to, to pay for people. So we are definitely looking at alternatives. The Cash Campaign is another one that we are partnering with them to help people access mainstream benefits. So there's a lot going on. Is that going to be enough? Probably not. We're going to assume that we're going to still get some more, hopefully additional federal monies. Honestly though, I'm okay with them delaying those additional funds for just a little bit so that we can work through the dollars that we have presently. And then in a few months, be ready for, for another wave of assistance. One question I did have for you all though, is, is the Commission on Disabilities, with regard to our eviction prevention portal, have you heard of individuals who are applying through the portal? We have not, we've heard from some other groups about needs and ways we've had to modify the portal to meet their needs, like Spanish speaking, that kind of. Spanish speaking, that kind of thing, or, or some other dropdown menu items. Has there been any feedback within the disability community about the portal, what's worked, what hasn't for them? I'd be curious to, to know.
I wasn't even aware of the eviction protection portal, but I'm so glad to learn about it. Do, perhaps know about this, Brian, David?
No, no, but I'm, I'm glad to hear about it, Colleen, because we do hear that there's issues, so I will pass this information along to our case managers. Mostly for those families who, not people who are in residential, but families who are taking care of their loved ones and they're struggling, yeah.
And it is, just to clarify, it is rental only? It does not involve homeowners? So we're only talking about rental assistance? And right now, actually, the site is down for construction and will be reopening on March 1st. So our time discussion here today is good because getting that information out for people who are in March 1st would be the time for them to go onto the portal and, and then sign up.
We'll spread it to, to our case managers, but in our staff as well, because we have a number of staff that are struggling.
Colleen, is there any status of individuals with disabilities? Or everybody is in one pot and the, the income level is the determination?
The income level is the determiner, the, there are some triggering things, you know, a little bit like vaccinations, some red flag issues that come out in the sense of, do you have a large family? Are you, trying to remember what, it's been a while since I looked at what all the, all the questions are. It's large family size has been the biggest issue, age is another one. And, you know, how quickly you're, you're at risk for eviction too is another one. So, and then, and like I said, you have to be impacted by COVID too, that's the other thing. You know, we've had, right now, we're actually finding of those who have signed up in the portal, really surprisingly to me, I would say a good thirty percent to forty percent of them are actually not eligible for the program. Despite the fact that we tried to make the dropdown menu very explicit about what the eligibility requirements are. You know, we still have people who, that you go all the way through, we found out they were homeowners, even though it says renters only, or they don't live in Baltimore County, or they're, they're, they were not impacted really by COVID. So anyone who had an eviction pending prior to March 15th, I believe it is, mid-March, does not qualify for this program because that does not make them COVID impacted. And Larry, you had a question? You're on mute, I think, Larry.
Okay, Colleen, sorry. My question is, is there any way that you can write a requirement in that meets up with Ben's concern? So you have allocation for a person with a disability? Because you already just stated a moment ago, the time that was wasted on those who applied that right off the bat, that weren't qualified. So I'm trying to see if a way in just can cut down your time to get to the people who are in the maze that can't be found right off the top, that this help could really help.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I can stop people from, you know, if you're a homeowner and you still sign yourself up, right?
No, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying, you can't stop that, you have no control of that. What I'm trying to do is to find a way that you can identify those individuals that you can share your time with opposed to anybody who can fill it out. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I'm trying to create a queue for you to pull out those individuals.
Right. Yes, that is something we're constantly doing. One thing I would ask of you all, if there are any questions that you think that should be help, that we could add to the portal that would help us determine really on the brink and, and most in need kind of that we should enter in, you know, let us know, send, send us those questions. Because there's a lot of things, you know, we would like to ask people, but that we're not really allowed to ask people either. And so we're looking for ideas all the time on how to, you know, create a better mousetrap with this thing, right? I mean, yeah. So yeah, any suggestions that you have would be good.
Colleen, would you send me your URL to Jay for the portal? And he can distribute it to everybody so we can just get right to the portal?
Yeah.
That would be great.
But right at the moment, the portal is not live on the county site, that's correct?
Correct, correct, and I just wrote a note to myself, I'm going to see if there's a way that I can maybe get the IT people to, when we first started months ago, there was like a dummy kind of a portal that we could use to have people go in and explore and, from a staffing perspective, I do not know if that's still viable at all, or if it's so outdated that it really wouldn't work anymore. But I just wrote a note to myself to check with IT to see what we could do to maybe give you access in the next couple of weeks before, I mean, obviously, March 1st, you would be able to go in and, and be live and, and sign up in theory. But if we could get some, you know, thoughts now, that would be even better.
Right, to see what's out there now, we could possibly add some recommendations to better clarify who truly can apply and be qualified for it.
Right, right.
Great to hear, oh my gosh. Well, it sounds like one of my clients being very aggressive in finding, finding these funding streams, I'm really impressed and glad. But getting the information out to the people who need it, is that a problem? How do they find out?
Yeah, one of the questions I wanted to ask you guys too was, do you get, because I thought you did, the Resource Guide? The Baltimore County Resource Guide Weekly? Okay, so in there, it actually talks about the portal and the eviction prevention and how you sign up, so, Jay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I definitely distributed that Resource Guide, I mean, probably five weeks in a row, maybe, maybe three months ago. But, I mean, I have not sent an updated Resource Guide to the Commission for a couple of months.
Okay. So yeah, so the Baltimore County does have this Resource Guide that it puts out weekly. Much of the information remains the same, but obviously, as things come up, like I was just looking at last week's Resource Guide and there it says that the eviction moratorium goes through March. You know, but then yesterday, they extended it through June 30th. So those are the kinds of things that would be updated in there as new programs or changes to programs occur. But it goes over, you know, healthcare resources, food resources, housing and utility resources, legal assistance, business owner resources, internet access, Wi-Fi, senior resources, that kind of thing. So, Jay, I think, I'm not sure that I've been getting them as often either. But I will ask Mary Clay, actually, Jay, you could ask Mary to put you on her distribution list.
So this is not on the county website? This is a separate, okay, okay.
It's not, I mean, the, all of the information is on the county website, but not in one packet, right? And so this county resource is actually really meant, we're, we're certainly allowed to give it out to individual people, but it's really meant more for non-partner, nonprofit partners and that sort of thing to help guide citizens as they, as they, you know, get a call about something and, and see a need.
Just to chime in, I mean, Baltimore County, since, you know, March, April, May, the beginning of the pandemic, the county has ubiquitous generic references to COVID-19 resources on the website. You know, it might not be your cup of tea, but I mean, if you go to the county homepage right now, you'll see, you know, a, a line of text with a link to, you know, the big world of COVID response. It can be overwhelming, but I just want to share that. I mean, if a commission member wanted to just test the waters and sort of, you know, go and, and test how the system functions, hit, hit the first COVID link you see and, you know, see if you can get the assistance that you might want, or that, you know, a individual who you're screening for, or just, you know, as a, as a resource tester, you know, so we can, Colleen, we'll definitely, we'll follow up on this Resource Guide, which we were sending out. But, I mean, I think every government website under the sun has, you know, banner COVID links.
Yeah, true. I think as you go through the portal too, one of the things I would be interested in knowing is, you know, are there pieces we are missing with regard to the, with regard to citizens with disabilities, right? Like, obviously, a, a computer hookup also only works if you can actually access and see it and that sort of thing. So, you know, is that an alternative that we need for, for people who are sight impaired? Is there, is this, I mean, I know the county, when it does its website stuff, makes it ADA compatible, but you know, are there other avenues that we should be thinking of that are not obvious to us? You know, we would like your feedback on that.
Just those who don't have computer access? I mean, how can we get that to them?
Yeah, the portal, I mean, most, we have not found so far from calls that we've gotten to 211 or 311 and such, that that has been an issue for individuals, not that we've heard of. Not saying it hasn't been, but we find that most people who we don't think have computer access still have a, a younger person in their family with a smartphone, right? Because it is very, you can do it on a smartphone as well. So we have not heard that yet to be a big issue. But again, if this is something that once you start talking with your partners and your clients and all of that sort of thing and hear that it is, you know, I'd love to hear about it. But so far, we haven't heard of it.
So if someone called 311, would they have knowledge about the Weekly Resource Guide?
They actually have the Weekly Resource Guide.
Good, great.
So they would be, that's, they were using that as the kind of like, oh, here, this is where you would go.
Good.
Well, we would love to hear from the providers, you know, the commission per the county code. We're, we have many, many providers that are, you know, that we want to be on the commission and many organizations are. So, you know, you know your clients perhaps better than myself and Colleen today. And again, you know, sometimes it's a client, sometimes it's a caregiver to a client. I would like to say, I mean, HUD and the CDBG program look very favorably on, you know, getting people connected to the internet and broadband access, it's a legitimate CDBG expense. And in our capital projects, you know, maybe we could take that on, I've already heard from one organization that has, you know, alternative living units in a rural location and there's no good broadband, you know, and the county knows that.
Actually, Jay, just so you know too, this is something the county actually has been working on as a whole for people in rural areas and they've actually been working with the providers to increase capacity. I know they just did a grant for some funding for that.
Yeah.
So they get funding for the internet for people that need it? They can't do it, they can't make the request individually, they have to go through an agency?
No, 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 two different things. So what he's talking is, there are areas of the county where you literally cannot get internet access because if you're up in the rural areas and that sort of thing, wealthy or not, or, or, you know, non-wealthy, internet access is much harder in those jurisdictions than it is like in the areas surrounding the Beltway, for example. So, one is about sort of bringing internet access to more rural jurisdictions. And then there's the issue of, even if that access physically was there, could you get it, right? And so on the Wi-Fi that was there, Verizon is offering a $20 a month and Comcast is offering, that is $10 a month for Internet Essentials. So if you're low income, you can actually right now get, again, assuming there's physical connections near you, you can sign up with Verizon and Comcast right now based on your income for reduced. Now, you're not going to get the whole bells and whistles. And I believe it's Comcast just upped their, whatever their minimum level was because particularly for the school system, this is a big issue if you've got, you know, multiple children learning at home, online, and you don't have the highest speed internet. So Comcast just said they were bumping it for that Internet Essentials program.
This is all great information, thank you, that I wasn't aware of. Anybody else have any questions for Colleen? So you're going to send a concise summary of this to Jay for us to make sure.
Jay, Jay will give a concise summary for me, sure.
That's a lot of information, but it, but it's wealthy, it's wonderful information that I don't think our agencies knew about either. So this is good. Thank you, oh my.
All right, well, I'm going to sign off because I have another meeting to go to, so, everybody have a great day.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you. Okay, David Greenberg, you're up.
Okay, I'm going to try to share my screen. Do you see it? There we go. Are you seeing that?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, good. I'll do this quickly because I'm a hard out at 1:30, I thought this was an hour and a half meeting. But I, I was asked to update you all. So I stole the, what MAX has been following, what the DD Development Disabilities Council has been following, and then maybe even Disability Law Center, and just pulled the, the bills that I thought people would like to know about. So there's a, a big push now to make, you know, baby changing stations but for adults to be available and not only be available, but to, I can't remember where it is, there, there's supposed to be a, a, additionally, the bill will require a list of where these facilities are, which will be great for families. So that if you're going out and you've got an adult that you will need to, a, a changing table, where it specifically will be, could be public or private. So I thought that was, that was a nice one. Moving, moving down, whoops, moving down to, give me a second. All right. The, this, this next one is about a, a bill for making sure that schools that receive federal funds, and, and down here, if you receive federal funds right now, they don't have to comply with the 504 of the Rehab Act, they don't have to be in compliance like, like public schools do. But if they're getting federal funds, we're saying that they, yes, they should have to do that. So there's a, there's a push for that, I'm not sure where, where that one is. Next one, and this is huge for, especially for those of us who run agencies. The Development Disabilities Administration, which funds most of all the developmental individuals that we serve, they, it seems like just a few years ago, they were like 890 million dollar budget. It's up to almost 1.5 billion dollars. And that's due to a, a push by many of the people on this call to get them to fund our DSPs, direct support professionals. So their budget not only went up to, you know, what, almost one and a half million dollars, but, which is an 8.4% increase over just what it was before, to cover, cover some rate increases. Look at this, the, the first item here, rate and wages for, for providing community services or people in self-funded has gone up 4%, but that went up 4% January 1st, like, like six weeks ago. but that went up 4% January 1st, like, like six weeks ago. And instead of having to wait till July 1, they put it in place right away and funded to put it in place right away. Additional money, there's always money for transitioning youth, the people who are moving out of the school systems, you know, mostly turning 21 and, and now into the DD system, which they anticipate will be about 600 people. There's 2.3 million for emergencies for help of about 40 individuals, 39. The crisis resolution, people who are on this waiting list, but they're having a crisis, 13.7 million. And I believe that crisis one is the one, the focus on those elderly parents who are in their 70s, 80s, 90s, and still taking care of an adult child at home. Those are the, those are the priority people. And, or that could be on this waiting list, on, on this waiting list one. I'm not sure which it is, but just point is a lot of money. And then DSS has, has 21 kids that are coming out of their system into the DD system. List, the low intensity support services that funds like extra things that people might need. I can't remember what the limit is. It's like $2,000 or $2,500, but that will help 2,000 individuals. Moving on to some other legislation, the Relief Act, that you probably read a lot, a lot in the paper in the last couple of days, and it had a big signing ceremony, I think it was yesterday, it would have been the day before. That's, you know, a billion dollars, but there's money in there for, this is the general money for, for, uh, low to moderate income people, 750 for families, 450 for individuals. But moving on, there's also money in that for $5 million for development disability providers like those of us on this call. And they're, they're figuring out how that's going to be distributed, probably not through DDA. And, you know, people will have to go after grants for that. There's a 50 million in there because, you know, kids have lost a lot for them to catch up for software programming. And then this help for the school systems for more in-person education. Moving on, there's a whole, I'm going to zip through a whole bunch of election-related legislation. And it helps people with disabilities, all these things, training the judges on how to accommodate people with disabilities. Showing them the right tools, that sort of thing. There's never been a focus on that. The whole election by mail that we all learned about in this last election. This is, this is a, a, a bill to say, just send a ballot to everybody who's registered. And, and this is not necessarily disabilities, but, but, you know, but they would help people with disabilities. So you don't have to worry about it. And then a, a, a better access for, for people with disabilities. Voting priority. So I was fascinated to see that as someone who does, you know, early and regular voting here, this is a mandated that if somebody requests priority because of they're infirmed or they have a disability or whatever, and I'm sure it'll lay it out, that there's a, a system, there'd be a system in place for them to get that priority. And a note, and a required notice to let people know as they show up at polling places that if you, you know, need to, to, to come to the front of the line for, because you have this, this, and this, you can do that. This might be the last election one, just the voting systems, been a lot, especially in the blind population, a lot of discussion about you shouldn't have to have a different system because you're blind, and then everybody knows that you use this different ballot. And people worry about that, that everybody would use the same system that would be accessible to everybody. It's basically what that one's about. I, I, I've sent this to Jay and he can blast it out to everybody. There's, this is mostly where the stuff came from. Ark Maryland has a bill tracker and the Maryland Development of Disabilities Coalition has this bill tracker. There's a lot of data in there. If you're a, you know, Annapolis legislative geek like Kathleen Durkin is, you go through every line of these things. All right. That's all I got. And I'm going to stop sharing if I figure out how to get out of here.
So it looks like one of those was cross filed.
I lost how to get out of here.
David, answer your question real quick. Maybe someone else, it looks like only one of those was cross filed, David.
Terry, you're muted. If you've been talking for a while.
No, she's on. No, she's on.
It, it, I was writing the house bill numbers down. It looks like only one or two of them.
Terry, we can't hear you.
Can everybody else hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'll, I'll email you afterwards because it looked like only two of them were cross filed. So can.
Maybe I broke it.
Say again. What I found.
Jay, can you help?
I, I found if you send the bills and the summary of the bill to people and the people that are on that committee and their emails, the people are more apt to respond and send something more quickly. I'll get that to David afterward. Does that make sense to everybody? If, because if I send this to everyone, people, regular people with disabilities probably aren't going to go through it, look up what committee it goes to, look up their emails. If we can get what committee each of these pieces of legislation goes to and who to connect with, boom, you know, we can send it, send it off a lot easier. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah. Terry, I, I went through the Department of Disability list. There's a couple more bills that may be, is of interest. There's a bill to install a video recordings in special ed classrooms. And so that's of interest. There's a, a bill dealing with visitation for individuals who have been in facilities to make some type of arrangements for visitations through audio and, and the like, because right now you go to a Wendy, you tap on a Wendy and, and that's it. There's a, another which will increase the awareness of Alzheimer's that, through public health. There's another one dealing with telemedicine. There's a, a sunset of a bill dealing with telemedicine for some psychiatric and, and mental needs. So as David's pointed out, a lot of the bills are there on this Department of Disability website. And if you click on a bill, it'll take you to where it is, whether it's had a hearing or third reading, second reading, it's been cross filed and the like. So that's a helpful website also.
Can you hear me now, David? He still can't hear.
It was me. It was, it was my fault. Hit my speaker. Feel like an idiot.
What I was saying, when I've asked people to support or oppose a certain bill, I send them the name of the bill, who's on the committee with each email address, and a suggested couple phrases to say. And I find that people are much more apt to sending the email, everything, if everything's together. What you put together is fabulous. Knowing who's on the, which committee it is, or, or, and, and their addresses would help. Is there someone that can do that for us? Hate to make more work for you, but if you want us to support these bills, I think would make it very simple for people to do that. Does that make sense?
I don't necessarily want anybody to support any of those bills. I just want to make people aware of them. And if, if, if we hear through our constituents that this bill needs a lot of push because it's on the brink, that's when we would come out and, and send the, the alert out. But, you know, this, I thought we were just kind of doing a general overview and I like what Ben added to it. That these are, this is what Annapolis is talking about. It's, it's fairly preliminary now to, because I think we're only a third of the way through the legislation to know, you know, what, what's on the cutting block or not. Like, I don't think it's a, we have to worry about the D- Development of Disabilities budget. That seems to be like it's gone through. But, but if it weren't, we, we would come to you and say, hey, contact, you know, this person, this person. So, so I'll keep that in mind though, to, to pass along, should that come along. And I think any of us who, who follow this stuff will do that.
Appreciate that. That's wonderful. Thank you. Anything else on legislation?
Yeah, Mike Bullis sent me a couple items. Let me see if I can call him up quickly.
Yes, he was on his way to get his COVID shot. So he sent that out real quickly this morning. And I think that we can do exactly what we've done in the past. Once we know a bill that's going to help the people with disabilities that we serve, that we can send out exactly who to contact. It, it just makes it so much easier for everyone.
Yeah, my two cents is a little bit like David Greenberg. I, I think that, you know, we provide awareness. It's another step in the process to lobby for it. And my thoughts on lobbying are, you know, it's a free country. It's the United States of America. Any individual can lobby for any public policy measure they wish. I don't see anything inhibiting that whatsoever. I also feel as though, I mean, if the commission wants to take two items out of a list of 20 and lobby, that's fine, but I think it's fine to, you know, promote awareness. I think it's another step to, you know, set up an infrastructure to lobby with, you know, names, phone numbers, committee assignments and all of that. So Mike Bullis, if you just want to look at your screen, I really just came across the wires 10 minutes ago, 10 minutes prior to the meeting. So this is just, let me disclose this and you guys can look at it. These are bills that he's interested in. So we'll take like another 60 seconds.
So you can share these also with everyone?
Yeah.
And as, as a commission, we cannot support a bill unless we have the permission from the county executive. So as an individual, that's what I'm, I'm suggesting people do.
Okey doke. Madam Chair, up to you. I can give, I can give two minutes on capital projects.
Perfect.
So generally, the deadline for capital projects for CDBG funds out of the Department of Planning was February 2. We had seven applications come in. Four of the applications were for projects serving people with disabilities. So those four projects total $386,000. Generally, I feel that's a, that's a reasonable, healthy number for us to continue the role that we play to support providers with alternative living units or day programs to make physical improvements. We presently in fiscal year 21, which is the current fiscal year, prologue is underway with the HVAC replacement, Key Point is underway, and Penmar is underway. This means the grant agreement is signed, sealed, and delivered. They are in a procurement process, but they have a green light from us. And that's my two and a half minute report on capital projects.
Good job. Anybody else have anything? I do know under announcements, the Maryland Council for Independent Living is looking for people with disabilities to apply to be on their council. And as Jay said, we are still going through the reappointment process in the county. And you said you just received a few more names, Jay?
Yes, I believe seven commissioners received emails from the county executive on or about February 11 to, you know, to, to announce that they have been reappointed. I believe that we had, I had a working list of 10. We got seven out of the 10, you know, we don't get them all every time. And sometimes that's because of a glitch, a resume might not be in the system, an email might be in the Granica system. It's different than the true email, but Terry and I will look at that. We definitely have more work ahead of us in the, the world of appointments, but you know, I think in the past six months or so, we've gotten 15 people reappointed and we will continue on.
Wonderful. The only other thing I saw is that Baltimore County Public Schools have put out their annual stakeholder survey. It's always good to get input from the commission on that, individuals. Otherwise, anything else? I was glad to see that I'm funding for the towns at Padonia, which I pass a lot. They're building there and there's going to be some places that are all going to be made accessible because of the conciliatory agreement. Yes, Jay?
Yeah, that's two units will be wheelchair accessible. And I've been receiving flyers and I sent a flyer out via email to all of you. So Baltimore County provided financial assistance and, you know, we've been informed that two units will be wheelchair accessible. So that's why I shared it with all of you. But the county supported this project.
Anybody else have anything for the good of the people here? Do you have anything for us? Let's see, who was that? John Bryan, anything new in your office? He's unmuting.
There we go. We're always busy. I mean, we're certainly enforcing the Maryland Accessibility Code very vigorously, as, as you're aware of. Also, I got a meeting at 4 o'clock today with Office of Law and Traffic Engineering over access to the new Rattleball Park. Traffic engineering has brought up, brought up some issues I don't fully agree with necessarily. So we're going to resolve these along with our Office of Law.
Where is that, the Rattleball Park?
It's going to be 13 Maryland Avenue in Towson. It's, it's a very small park and they, we have a big block curb cut, but it's mostly accessed by motor vehicle. And we had a little marked off crosswalk area there for, for safety and our traffic engineering doesn't want any marking on their road. It's not theirs. We're going to put official ADA parking in a strict amount of time. So it's available for persons going to the park rather than somebody in the neighborhood just wanting to park an extra car there. So we're going to have a little powwow over that, but I'm a little bit, I want that marked area because it's, really, it don't, it doesn't go across the street. It's a crosswalk, but I want it clearly marked so that if somebody comes there and parks a vehicle or does something, especially if they back up, there's plenty of room because I, as you know, if you're in a wheelchair, it's very difficult for drivers to see you through the rearview mirror or side mirrors. And so we're going to have a conversation about that, see how that turns out.
Thank you for maintaining that conversation. That's great. Anybody else? Otherwise, I think we're going to sign off. I don't know what the third Wednesday in the next month is, but thank you. And let's keep each other in touch with what kind of, with what legislation you'd like us to support, okay? Signing out. Thank you all. Goodbye.
Thanks for coming.
LaMell Goodman.
Has left the meeting.
Colleen Malik.
Has left the meeting.